I'll board with change pending order, please. Please join me in the pleasure, Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the approval of the agenda of the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personal actions for consideration, item number E3. Remove item number G1, unfinished business, second grade readiness, from the original agenda, and add item J, is that J? J2, executive session, matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations.
All right, second amendment. Any questions or discussion? For your favorite? Post? The public comment? I would like to take this moment to recognize our new mayor, who is intended for office this year.
Yay!
As you said, can we have motion on the consent agenda, please?
On correspondence, I just wanted to make sure that the Hall of Fame induction ceremony is May 16th. Is that right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I will be there, but I want to make sure that we don't have too many people planning to attend, so it would be a public meeting. Is anyone else planning to attend?
I think it's probably three or ten.
Okay.
And if everybody will be there to support the Hall of Fame.
Okay, great, great.
I just kind of recommend that you kind of set strap.
Okay. I will be there.
And I apologize for not being able to be there, but I've got a pretty good reason.
Yeah, it's a great one. All right, Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda as.
Second amendment. Discussion and questions? For those in favor? Post? Yeah, now I don't see Darren, I guess you're it.
Mr. President, we just got message from Mark Rude that he just arrived in town and brought away.
Great.
Okay, I don't know about you, but I've been anxiously awaiting the results of our first grade readiness pilot program. So on Thursday and Friday, Dr. Atha, Dr. Dennis, and I met with all the elementary principals, and we sat down with them, we looked at their rubrics for all the kids that they were talking about having retention for this year. We looked, we asked them the question, what have you done to differentiate core instruction for them? What kinds of intervention have these kids had? What does parent involvement look like? What kinds of things have you done for engagement? What kinds of conferences have you had with these parents? And then how have you monitored? So those were some of the questions that we asked at that time. Just to kind of put it in perspective, here was what the committee asked for last year. The goal was to put structures in place to ensure that all students were first grade ready. And just a reminder of some of the skills that were on that rubric last year that they shared that they taught this year. And these were the skills that were given to parents all year long. Some of the assessments that they used, some of the assessments were screeners and diagnostic assessments that they already used, but then some were created by them to meet the needs of their kids. Here were some of the things that they had for support for teachers. We started out with kindergarten roundup during enrollment day last year, and we considered it a success because we had about 50 percent of our students show up with their parents. We were able to screen those students, we were already able to give the parents some information about what needed to happen for them to be successful in first grade, I'm sorry, yeah, first grade. One of the things we also noticed was that our early childhood center was yielding pretty good results because we could sure tell the difference between those kids who came in from our early childhood center and those kids who didn't. We also got some pretty good data from our early childhood center. They were able to give their PPVT, which kind of shows us what kind of vocabulary those kids had. So we had that information already on those kids. And then another thing that happened this year was Sue Dennis and Susan Boyle, they facilitated a kindergarten club for teachers that met once a month. They talked about issues, they talked about getting parents involved, they talked about different things that were related to kindergarten. They had a couple of guest speakers, and I was honored to be able to go speak to them at their request, so that was kind of interesting. So that's the support we had for teachers. The support for parents, they had a lot of support for parents. As we talked with principals, these were some of the things we were able to gather from the conversation. Of course, the kindergarten roundup was mentioned several times. The open house was mentioned, the pamphlets that were created by the kindergarten teachers, the flip charts that provided ideas and activities for reading and math, differentiated resources, and some of our schools did a really neat thing at screening last year. If they had a child that maybe needed some help in math, they had some pre-made math flash cards and things like that that they would give to particular parents. Or if there were some color words that they needed, they had color word cards. And I think a lot of these schools picked up on that, and more will do it this year than did it last year. So that's great differentiation. A lot of our teachers were able to model for parents some of the activities and things that would help their students. So the modeling was a big deal. And of course, parent-teacher conferences was a source of information. A lot of our schools also had special kindergarten meetings where they haven't had that before. They would have just a kindergarten meeting throughout the year where they would call the parents in, they would go over those rubrics again, they would talk about the expectations, and they would give out even more resources. So I'm even more confident than before that we have done a great job this year of informing our parents about what is needed for those expectations and that exit criteria. So here are the results. You can see 2010, 2011, we had 55 students that we were referring for retention. The year 2011, 2012, that went down to 37. Last year was 32. So far this year, we're looking at about 30. One of the things that we talked about during the meetings last week, we really didn't have a set deadline to finish looking at that data. We decided that May 15th will be the last day that we will fill out a rubric on a child. So we have at least three weeks to get some of these kids over the hump. We saw a lot of rubrics that were 21, 22. We need to get these kids to at least a 24 to be successfully exiting this criteria. So we have a lot of those kids that are right there. Three more weeks just might get some of those kids over the hump. But I would say we're looking at maybe five to six. So that 30 may go down five or six. So if we look at what we typically see with retentions, knowing in the past that it was based on feelings, it was based on maybe behavior, based on immaturity, we now know that this is based on academics and getting those kids where we want them by the end of the year. So I feel really good about where we're at and what we've done to support parents. So I think we've had a successful year. Questions?
Question on, is enrollment, was enrollment the same or pretty close to the same from 2010 to current?
Yeah, we've not had a lot of change there, so that's pretty similar.
Pete, you're May 15th, May is the last day you're going to work for.
Yes, that will be the last day for my data.
So at what point in time do you sit down with that parent and say, we need to look at retaining the child for the end of the year?
They've been sitting down probably since February, since that last parent-teacher conference, and they've been telling parents, this is a possibility. This is where we need to get your child for the end of the year. And I would say a lot of teachers have had several conversations since that time, just to give parents an update as to where they are in process.
When do you sit down and actually tell them, okay? Based on their scoring, when do you actually say, okay, it's going to happen?
Well, they're going to cut it off May 15th, and I would assume that they would have a conversation between now and the beginning of the year.
And would you say that the lower number of projected retentions is due to earlier intervention? Or are the guidelines being more data-driven?
Very much data-driven.
You don't think that, because I would assume that because we're seeing this data on one or twice, but we're monitoring it throughout the school year, we're identifying student needs earlier and addressing it, getting parents involved earlier. So maybe we're intervening to the point where we're doing the work to get the student up to speed. Do you see what I'm saying?
I think we're doing a lot of the work, but I also think they've helped the parents because we heard instance after instance where the parent has been helping to.
That's what I mean, that's intervention to me. It's like, that's not just because the rubric is working. I think it's because we're intervening. And I think we're showing our due diligence upfront. I mean, obviously, it's both.
Sure.
But I would like to say it's, a lot of it is working with the kids sooner than later.
And parents sooner than later.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That criteria, I get the sense that this approach allows that better communication with the parents where the expectations are more clear. And so when we get down to that point at the end of the year, it's, there's no surprise.
No surprise. Everything they've done this year has been very aligned. The grade cards align to what they're doing with the exit criteria. So what they're seeing in the rubric matches what they're seeing on the grade card. Everything to me is consistent. I haven't seen any problems with that at all.
Can you kind of put you on the spot here, is can you, off the top of your head, share comments that you've gotten from parents, just their thoughts?
I haven't directly gotten any comments from parents. And as the principals talked about, parents who were a little bit reluctant to want their kids retained, they were maybe only a handful. There weren't very many, and I was surprised at that. I thought there would be more resistance to that. But I think it's that education early on for screening until now. So I think we've done a nice job talking to parents.
I know we're not specifically talking about the second grade readiness program tonight, but do you feel that what we've done for first grade readiness is aligned with what has been proposed with second grade readiness?
Yeah, in fact, the teachers, when they were looking at the criteria, they looked at what they had put in place for this group, and they said, we don't need to start new. We just need to expand on what they've done. So it looks very similar, and that was really their plan because they know that the parents coming from having kids in kindergarten will want the same thing for their kids in first grade. They will want that to look similar, and they will want to know what that progression is, so.
I just think with the consistency, we're going to be more successful, and the parents are going to be more in the know and more on board with what we're doing. And I think it's really going to make all of our buildings look the same in the classroom, which is one of our goals, so that's great.
Any questions?
I think one thing I'd like to comment on, and maybe I should, that we have the principals through the student variety last week. I think it's important that we can't wait to make a video. About each principal, they probably had about 45 minutes of time. And it was real interesting how we started carrying the same common themes with 11 different principals and how they were implementing this with fidelity in their buildings. And our purpose was to make sure that we were implementing this with fidelity and following the rubric and following what the teachers who were empowered as kindergarten teachers recommended to the Board of Education. And I think we hit that part on Thursday and Friday, that teachers are and principals are trying to implement this with fidelity.
Thank you, William. With that, we'd like Mr. Ron.
What we're proposing to do what we're proposing to do is to move the virtual program, Virtual Academy, to year-round for a lot of reasons, kind of up here, got them up here for you. We have had a lot of discussion with people who, a lot of our virtual students were learning this year, were our first year, are very unconventional students. We check the login sheets, we're getting people logged in from 1:00 to 3:00 in the morning, working on their coursework. It fits in well with shift work, it fits in well with people who are doing other jobs in the community. And one overwhelming thing when we polled them was that they would use this over the summer. And that's among both our regular alternates, school students who are in the building, and our virtual students who don't attend at all. Right now, 80 of our students, I have 128 students enrolled this morning. I was talking before, Gloria, we started the very first day of four. And by the end of the first week, we had eight, and now we're at 128. 80 of those people right now are either in their senior year somewhere, working on graduating very shortly, or adults who are working on it at their own pace. You know, really pushing adults as far as we do the others, but they're making a lot of good progress. Students can complete credits through the summer, and instead of just getting to the point of the end of the school year and stopping, one of the things that doesn't make a lot of sense to a virtual student is, I'm not coming here. May doesn't mean a lot to them. They want to keep going. Almost universally, they want to keep going. We polled everybody we could get to talk to, and not one person said that they didn't want to go over the summer. Continuity, one of the things we're looking at is keeping people for the count. I don't want to just talk about, count, there's a lot of education here, it has nothing to do with that, but when we have all these folks over the summer, we're going to handle them for September as well. This goes to reason. There's continuous rolling off, they aren't stopping. So that means instead of the break year point, which we did break year this year, we anticipate that going way into the year. Well, Gloria, and the students can keep moving. They don't have to slow down for anything. They can catch up, they can get their 201 credits done as quickly as they care to. If I have students who have failed the virtual class, not finished it, or if I have students in the alternate center who have failed the class, they can use this over the summer to get caught back up. They don't have to fall behind and just deal with it for three months. Got a little quote there for, if you missed any school, you're able to make up work that you're behind on. Obviously, better prepare students for the following school year because we don't have that peak where the chart goes up, 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 and then falls off for the summer. Some benefits across the district, I've talked to Dr. Johnson, any IUP student who wants to pursue edutainment courses can do it over the summer. One of the people that we're asking about having, you guys let us use over the summer, will be a parent professional from the special ed department, which will allow IUP students to receive services over the summer. So we don't keep anybody out of this, if they want to do that. It lets us enroll students who come to town or decide they want to start pursuing it during the summer. We don't have to tell them, that's great, you're fired up today. We'll see you later on, in a couple of months, come on back. Maybe you're still fired up, maybe you're not, but if you're fired up today, let's enroll them today. And that's going to let us do this. I've also been in communication with Mr. Morales. We're offering this to GCHS, so any students enrolled in the 2020 edutainment courses through Gartson High School can continue that progress over the summer. We'll maintain the records, we'll maintain the grades, and then at the end of the summer, we'll shoot all that information back to them so that those kids don't have to lose over the summer either. TEP kids, my therapeutic education program kids, if they're working, and they all are, on edutainment courses over the summer, during the school year, I don't have to slow them down. I can say, go ahead, go home, you've got a computer, keep working. That was especially important to me because my TEP kids are already at half-speed academically because of the therapy that they're going through at the same time. So this lets me have a few more months with them, keep them back on track. What do I need to make this work? I need 25 extra days on the actual instructor themselves. I need a parent increase from 215 to 260. I need the secretary to go from 215 to 260 for the reasons listed up there. And at the current FTE, right now, if we maintain, or if we get between four and five, call it five, if I can retain five students over the summer to be counted in the fall, that pays for the addition. Anything above me on that goes, like I said, into the plan. We have nine people graduating this year from the Virtual Academy. They aren't taking any classes in person anywhere. There are nine graduates this year totally from Virtual Academy. Now, that may seem like a small number for a first year, but I might refer you to some of the data that I brought to you when we started this. The previous three years, we sent 76 graduates down the road to other programs. So instead of sending those 76, and I don't know if we got them all. I'm assuming we have, because I have yet to have anybody in town choose another program outside of town now that we've got this here in town. I'm not saying they haven't, but they haven't come to me and told me that. Everybody we've spoken to about this has chosen our program. We've sent 76 down the road for the last three years. Now this year, we're graduating nine on our own, and 127, it should be 128, we enrolled on this one. And really, it all boils down to the fact that this is here. This is not going away, this is here. And like I said, my commitment, our commitment to forward to the community was to do this the right way. We are checking progress daily, at nine weeks of students making progress, we're putting the act where they started so we don't lose any more progress. Another thing that used to drive me nuts as principals, I was getting kids who had gone to another online program and stayed there, and stayed there, and stayed there, and nobody turfed them out until well into the second semester. So I was getting people that had missed two, three, four quarters of those schools. And now we're avoiding them. Oops. I'm sorry.
Ron, can you think of any negatives to doing this? Because I've been trying to, and I can't come up with any.
I really haven't been able to. I would have put them up there for you if I had. It's just kind of the way I do it, but I can't really think of them. I have, everybody that I've talked to about changing numbers of days on their work year has been totally in favor, I love the idea. The people I've talked to who are attending have all been very, very positive. They want to keep going over the summer. We learned a lot our first school year as a Virtual Academy. We're going to put that to work as we go through the summer as well.
Sorry, Mark, I know this.
I get that.
I think it goes right along with 24th Century Mining, which is kind of what we're all about this district. It feels amazing to me. I wish we had all your school for everybody that comes up on the night.
As you know, Governor Brownback signed into law today, the Funding Against Bill. One of the discussions of our legislators out there when they were working on this bill was to reduce the funding for virtual students. And we're at the bottom of the night negotiating that bill, they eliminate that portion of it. So the virtual school funding will still be fully funded as it was in the past. So, and now that the governor's starting to send the law that just even protects the virtual funding.
And if I could add something that Mark mentioned too. I know the component of having the teacher involved in the virtual school has, for what it's worth, pleased the courts quite a bit, especially insurance cases. Because we would have kids doing other online programs that I won't name, and ended up, you know, who knows what they were doing? And we could never get information from those programs about how much time is actually being logged in and that type of thing. So being able to have it here locally and have that accountable would be a piece. I believe there's even one judge that if you mentioned one of the other programs, he would go, no, you can do this one or stay in school, your choice. So, you know, it's been a really great asset, and I think having it over the summer as well for some of those kids who we've finally gotten to the point where they're doing what they need to be doing would be a huge asset.
I want to try to understand, wrap my mind around this carryover count through the summer issue. So if we keep five students engaged online past a certain date through the summer, you can include them on the next year's count for funding?
No, what I was trying to point out was, and I wasn't clear, I'm sorry. What I was trying to point out is, if this lets us maintain four or five, call it five more kids, more students, through the count, and we didn't lose over the summer because we just went away, those five students will pay for the addition that I'm asking for. The only thing I need to do is count five more people. That's probably the way I should have said it. If I can count five more people because of this, which I think I will, I mean, I'm not going to have everybody dying off over the summer, then it pays for itself.
I guess one of the questions too that I have is, if I'm in one of these programs, how much time do I have to complete it?
Well, again, we monitor your progress. You must be making an average that, your average with us is about six to seven hours a day. If you're not making that, and again, we say about per day because it's a gray area. You have people that can do it all week long because they're working. And then they'll hit it so hard on Saturday and Sunday, 1:00, 3:00, and so. But, you know, it works out to an average of about what time you'd be in a scene in school. That's what we're hoping to, you know, you have to do that. Does that meet what you were asking?
Yeah, basically, it's sort of an accountability issue here that, you know, it's a grand and glorious thing for us to be able to facilitate these folks, to be able to get their education. And I want to be sure that it's clear that they have the accountability element here while we're considering additional funding. It's a win-win, and if we can get, as you pointed, five people to stay in as opposed to evaporating because we ended the thing in May, then it pays for itself. And that's the point here is, it's an enhancement without an additional burden as long as we can see that kind of results.
If I get any sizable portion of the people who responded positively to this, then it will work. We're experimenting, we are still in the first year.
You're projecting 50 percent, or what are you projecting?
50 percent of 128.
Yeah, staying throughout the summer.
With 128, you've got to remember, that's after. I mean, we were hired at one point, but the last quarter, we had a lot of guys, not, I shouldn't say a lot, we probably had a few teens, people who weren't doing anything. We make the phone calls, we make the personal contacts, we drive to their house, and we open the door and say, where's your laptop, why don't you work? We do these things. And then if we really can't rally a kid, we put them back to where they came from. If they're going back to my alternate center, then I say, guess what? Guess where, I'll see you Monday morning. You're coming back to school because you didn't do anything with this. It's not punitive, it's you didn't take advantage of this opportunity, let's get you back to where you can learn. We had only nine go back to the high, took out the same high school. That's where they came to us from, to do virtual. And a lot of times, students don't believe that we're going to track them. We can tell you how many minutes they were on, we can tell you if they had idle time, we can tell you how long a break they took in pursuing a course. So we're pretty sure that we're at least having them online doing what they're supposed to do.
But of the virtual students that are online right now, how many of those do you suspect would continue this summer?
From speaking to people totally anecdotally, I'm hoping half of them.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I'm hoping for half to three-quarters.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people just, they're in the groove, and if they stop the groove, it's not going to continue.
Because one of the things I want, and it's just amazing what you're doing, and it's exciting. We certainly want to be able to take this a step at a time. And then if it doesn't work for some reason, I don't know what happens in June, but if nobody stays in there, then we'll want to make that adjustment. But it seems like a pretty important investment to take advantage of your work here for that potential success. And then if it doesn't work, we can change.
Well, if it doesn't work, we'll prove it doesn't work, and then we can do something different.
Do something different.
Go back five and try again. We can do something different, got back live and try again.
It, it's a budgetary challenge, I think that we're facing overall, that this is a small piece of the bigger program that seems to make sense from the standpoint of the additional investment. That's just my thoughts.
I think it's going to open the door to how kids want to learn too. I think this is the beginning of a movement towards all-year education, honestly. I mean, I know that I'm on my soapbox here, but it just seems to flow, I mean, why stop? The challenge of it, so anyway.
If, if this was the past, to devote, when, was there a reason that we can give some results back? Some feedback from you on the summer program?
Well, I could, if you're talking about whether or not anyone participated, we could do that at the end of the summer. If you're talking about how it's going to pan out for the count, the people who attended over the summer, we could do that at the count. Both would like, we have to.
Yeah, maybe both get that.
Got it.
Together, one meeting, that'd be great.
Sure.
All right, Mr. President, I'd like to move that we accept the year-round virtual school as presented.
Further discussion or questions?
Just, and I know it's there, but just to echo Alex's comment, it would be good to kind of expect a report just so that we can be confident that not only to the extent of the success, but maybe, man, this is so good, what's your next proposal kind of thing, so. Only comments I have, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Who's in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.